All right, we'll move on to item number three, the rezoning. Williamson Associates Care, Scott Haynes, has submitted an application for rezoning, tax map 029, parcel 015, located at 101 Kittel Farm Road from General Agriculture, A2, highway business B2, conditional use is also requested for a building exceeding the floor area of 40,000 square feet. It's only being unanimously recommended approval. Scott is the applicant. You are welcome to speak first if you so desire.
Thank you. Again, my name is Scott Haynes. I am at 211 Clark Road, Glendale, Georgia, and I am the landscape architect of Williamson Associates. Mr. Doster came to us with a vision several, several months ago, and it's kind of a special project, something we don't see often, and something I instantly got pretty excited about. And obviously, I've not known Charles long, but in that short time, coming to find out, he's a local property owner here in the county. He's a very driven individual, grew up in this area, and he's the kind of person that you want involved in a community project because he has a very high standard for good work. This vision to bring this market center here to 78 is a unique, very unique vision. And it's difficult to kind of frame it into a zoning box because, again, as you heard from the last application, the term "spot zoning" comes up often. But I would argue that there's, you know, very, there's few other places that are, that work other than rural settings for this type of development. This is not the kind of thing that you want to place in the city center, not the kind of thing you want to place next to heavy commercial. Its appeal comes in the rustic nature of the development itself. Now, understand that there's, there are people that are going to be concerned about this type of proposition because they're scared of another J&amp;J or Pendergrass-type flea market operation. And I can hear those concerns, and I can tell you that that's the last thing that Charles is looking to put down here. The level of quality is what's going to separate this type of development from any so-called flea market because this is not a flea market. This is somewhere that's going to specialize in the lanes spent, parts of crafts, handmade items, emphasis on fresh market-type things, farm, farm products. And although we can't guarantee exactly what's going to be sold there, we can guarantee that it's not going to be seen from the road, that it's not going to be obnoxious to neighbors, that it's not going to generate noise that's going to disturb the neighbor environment. We can protect the neighbors from all those things, and we can put a very high facade on this building and make sure that the property itself is kept well, and that it doesn't turn into something that I think a lot of folks have feared it might be, which are those other examples I mentioned earlier I won't say again. Really, the model for this has come from, you've seen the farm view over in Madison, a beautiful building erected, I guess, years ago. It's got a really nice rustic-type facade on it. I've given you an example of this in the packet. It's the nice market picture up front. This is dealing with this first building, and so if you look at our site plan, there's a building that basically has three tiers to it. Each of those wings accounts me a 20,000-square-foot bay. The intention is to be able to build them out over time as demand warrants. This is essentially what we're calling kind of phase one of this. Now, also in addition to this, this center, we've got some other elements that Mr. Doster felt pretty strong about in terms of community, community involvement. One is a net center. This would be a barn-type structure, open barn, that could house rodeos for even weddings or community events, the like, and be covered. And between that and the market, we've, we've put a children's area. This is basically very similar to, we've been to fall festival areas where there were Washington farms, or there's a really great one out in the mountains called Por dogs, kind of area that kids can come, be in a contained area and play, basically bringing all the family together in this, in this place. Now, we asked for a conditional use permit on this because upon build-out, if all three tiers are built out, it would be 60,000 square feet. This trips to 40,000 square foot conditional use. That is why we're asking for that. In addition to the buildings, there's going to be area in the back, obviously overflow parking. We imagine this being some kind of proof service-like gravel, but we envision what's up front to be paved. It's going to have to be accessible, it's going to have to be kept neat and clean, and so our approach there is nice and formal up front and then having gravel overflow in the back. Beyond that, there'd be area for septic to deal with this development, and also stormwater manager pond towards the rear of the property. We've kept a big buffer on the creek, we're saying 100 feet on the creek, and around the church up front. We obviously have a good bit of green space beyond this, what's shown here, that's going to be maintained as such. One thing I'd point out that this is a conditional use zoning, so it's essentially a binding plan. What you see is what is going to be approved if you choose to approve it, and what would be held to do. There would be some minor allowances to move elements around, but we can't come back and turn it into something that's not representative of my hope, that gives a little bit of confidence to what we're trying to achieve here. There was some concerns about traffic. I understand that. The curve that precedes us on the Athens side is pretty, it's a pretty blind curve. As the plan is drawn right now, does not work. Let me say that we can make it work, though. We can move that driveway down the road when we get adequate site distance, and that will work with GDOT standards. I've looked at the site, I've looked at the standards, and fact of the matter is that road's controlled by Georgia Department of Transportation, and they're going to issue us those permission orders that comes with getting a permit for driveway. They will have to give access to the site, but it'll have to be in a fashion that they see fits safe procedure, which means Dcel, ASL lanes, proper site distance, especially in the turn to your left if you're in the property, and there's plenty of adequate site distance to the right. Also, we're on the topic of GDOT. I understand there's a long-range plan right now for this realignment of 78. It's our understanding that's been pushed to the long-range shelf in GDOT, which means it would be a decade before we see those plans coming around. Generally, those long-range plans take quite some time to come forward if they do come forward at all. In closing, I just wanted to say thank you for your time this evening. Again, I'm more than happy to answer your questions we have. Mr. Doster's here in the audience, and you'd be happy to feel your questions might have for him as well. I'd like to thank all the residents that met with Charles last week to hear him and ask questions. We know that he's committed to producing a quality product, and this would be no exception. Thank you.
The next person, first person I have, because of the accent, is Jim Hawkins.
Hi, I'm Jim Hawkins, and in the interest of full disclosure, I reside and have Homestead exemption at 182 Greenwood Court in Normaltown, but I've had a room at 5 Yancey Road for 74 years now, and I'm out there a lot, too. So, I want to say that our family home and farm adjoins the proposed rezoning. As best we know, our home was built in 1828, and it sits on 145 acres that is owned to A2 General Agriculture with an SP scenic preservation overlay and is still used for farming, though we've never had our home placed on the National Register of Historic Places. It is register eligible. The next house down the road on the same side is Lamar Woods Brick House, which was built even earlier and is on the National Register. Both of these houses are discussed in Abel Rogers, the housing of historic, of Oldencore County, Georgia, 1890 to, thank you, 1790 to 1860. The proposed rezoning for a highway business is between our two houses. It's next door to St. James AME Church, and it's historic one-room schoolhouse. Both of those structures would be National Register eligible, I would think. In the other direction, we're joined by Cherokee Corner Church, the Cherokee Corner, and the Debbie Nursery House, which was once a stagecoach stop and inn and Presbyterian school. This is an incomplete list, but the point I'm trying to make is to call attention to the historic resources in this little stretch of the road. Our comprehensive plan, 2037, in it, we have a lot to say about how we value our, our senior and historic resources. We've divided the county into six community character areas: the Back Forty, Country Crossroads, Ouyman Center, Gateway Corridor, Residential Transition, and Rural Living. The subject property is in the Rural Living area, and our land use plan does not include B2 highway businesses as a compatible land use for this Rural Living area. There is an area called Gateway Corridor where B2 is compatible. The map, and, let me show you this. This is a small map, but you can see this is the Rural Living area in light green, and the Gateway Corridor is in orange. And I can't imagine why, but the bypasses are not included in this map, and it's supposed to service for 20 years. The historic area, this historic area got sort of saved when the railroad came through on the fall line between the Broad and O'Conne Rivers, and the post office was moved, was moved to what we now call Arnoldtsville. And I think saving them again was what prompted DOT to avoid them and build a bypass around them. This small part of the widening of Highway 78 between just east of Walmart and just east of Lexington is, I believe, the only part of that project not yet completed. Mr. Doster showed us a set of engineering drawings last week, which the DOT has invested hundreds of thousands of dollars. It would seem to indicate that they are prepared to move on this project. Surprising to me that Mr. Doster would purchase the land without a contingency that he'd have the zoning he needs to pursue his business. And while this may look like a great location for his flea market now, I'm surprised that he believes a flea market will thrive here once the bypass is constructed and the traffic count on old 78 is dramatically reduced. Why would, why would he make such a large investment in what is about to become essentially a dead-end street? When I was a teenage boy, I used to think that spot on my Uncle Thad's land would make a great home site. There was a nice field, now planted in unharvested Christmas trees, and behind that field are hardwoods and a screen. There was a great view across the field in front of that home site, across Highway 78, across our fields, across the Yancey Road, across the Winterville Road, and one could see the trains that ran on the now-abandoned track. I hope Mr. Doster would consider selling this ideal 64-acre mini farm site to a farmer. What a great place for, for some horses or to raise some vegetables in that field in front of the house. This is a great residential area, the Lake Overthorpe community, and numerous residences on the Old Edgewood Road and Yancey Roads. Someone would love to live there. Mr. Doster's business plan may be a good one, but I would expect that he would, and I would expect he would be a good native, but the point that I want to make is that this is not the right place. It will not only diminish the value of the adjoining properties and drive a stake in the heart of the historical area, but it is not in compliance with our land use plan either. Please vote against the rezoning, placing a highway business in a historically significant and sensitive area. Thank you.
Next person I have is Linda Lauderdale.
Hello. Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners, for listening to us tonight. I'm Linda Lauderdale, and I live on 75 Old Edward Road. My property probably will have the most impact with the projects that's going on behind because his land adjoins my land to the back. I am a speech pathologist. I've worked in the county since 1989. I'm still working full-time, and I'm not a person that pays a lot of attention to what's going around me, until something like this happens, and then you start to pay attention. I thank you for paying attention to the bigger issues. Monday night, I was just introduced to the Future Land Use Plan, which was created on April 22nd, 2017, so it's very current. It started giving me a headache, just to read it, but I think the people that looked at it and planned it put it in use for a reason, and I think the project that being is, that is being proposed is in opposition to this planned use because of the area span. I would like to thank Mr. Doster because he met with us on Monday night. He is very well-spoken. I think he's an entrepreneur. I think he wants to do what's best for the community. I trust him as a person. I have some concerns with the traffic, for sure, because if you live at Cherokee Corners, you know how dangerous that stretch of area is. I also have more concerns because in telling me what quality work he would do and all the projects that he had, which is owning the Johnson Ford Building, having little units, storage units, owning the nursery, it seemed like to me that this project is just another project for him because I think he would put good tenants in his property. But he very honestly said to us that he couldn't guarantee that he wouldn't flip the property and sell it at a later date. So that made me very uneasy in thinking what kind of tenants would be in this area, and we would absolutely have no control over it. The house we live on that adjoins the property is 30 acres. It was a house that Matt Leathers moved onto the property to put it in a pristine area. We bought it and restored it in 95. We have another historic property on it, which we moved, it was next to Highway 78. It's a cottage. My husband runs a bed and breakfast out of our property. We have, if you've never been to our home, you can go to the website and see FairhagensPlantation.com. You can see how meticulously we've restored it, and I think this would pretty much monetarily affect us. It would hurt our bed and breakfast business. We hear noise from the Kittel Farm area. We would hear dogs barking, and we would hear a little music. And when I see how the project is planned to protect the road frontage, what I am hearing is down the hill will be a parking lot behind my house. There may be some trees, but in terms of noise, I have concerns personally about the value of my home, of course, but I'm also looking at the bigger picture is, do we want to adhere to a plan that we have? I didn't know this plan existed. I didn't know the details of the plan, and I appeal to you to either oppose this rezoning or at least defer it, if you are not unaware, or maybe you are aware of every word in this document, but I was not. But I, I like Mr. Doster. I like his plan, but I don't like it in my backyard. Thank you.
Next person is Tom Gresham.
I'm stacking somewhere that the board can see. Did I put them up on the table?
Yes. Need some help?
No. There's more.
Wow.
You gonna roll all of that?
Yes. I can read fast. Yeah, good evening. My name is Tom Gresham. I live at 154 Timberland Trail, Illinois. I'm, I'm preparing some statements, and to stay ahead of the time, I'm going to go ahead and read these. I oppose the rezoning request for one main reason, which is that the area was thoughtfully and with good reason zoned to be A2 with a few scenic overlays interspersed, and was not intended to be the location of the type of facility that Mr. Doster proposes. The reasoning behind that zoning designation and for the related comprehensive plan guidelines that the county developed 15 or so years ago are just as valid today as they were then. That is, it was not a mistake or misjudgment, and circumstances have not changed very much. Many of us take great pride in that first mile and a half or so of US 78 coming from Clark County. We view this as our, the front door and entranceway to our county, and as such feel strongly that it is important to keep this scenic historic bit of corridor in its near pristine condition as the zoning intended. I've spent my life running an archaeological consulting business out of Athens, and have worked on DOT projects for over 30 years. This is the product of DOT studies, just archaeology and historic resources for this segment of 78 in Clark and Overthorpe County. As a former president of Historic OZ, I was in the position of advising on the routing of US 78 widened through our county about 10 years ago. The DOT hired another consulting firm, and they documented that this one and a half-mile length of highways being a remarkably historic area in terms of number and density of unspoiled historic resources. They factored in visual impacts to recommend that the existing highway not be widened and instead that a bypass to the north be built. This is currently the plan, and the project is waiting for funding. The point here is that an independent state entity later confirmed what our local zoning had already decided, that this stretch of highway is rich in historic resources, is nearly devoid of modern intrusions, and is worth making major efforts to preserve and protect. Put another way, the DOT is willing to spend a lot more money to build that bypass, to move the highway over, to preserve this stretch of road, and what is it going to say when the local government doesn't enforce its own ordinance, its own zoning, that it came up with itself and isn't going to cost the government, the local government anything, and yet we're not going to try to preserve it like the state is trying to? Some of you recall, let's see, a group last met with Mr. Doster. I'm going to be a little bit repetitive of the analogies here, because I also found him to be a very honest, hard-working man who answered all the questions we had. He told us that he has about 150 properties, so I am sure that he knows about zoning, and knew that this parcel was not zoned for the intention of his intended project. As we pointed out earlier, just a half-mile down the highway toward the intersection of the Winterville Road, there's a quick transition to commercial properties. Current zoning logically designates the US Corridor from there to Crawford and on to Lexington for commercial development. There are a number of businesses and still a good bit of open land there. This is where the town center project should go, not in the scenic A2 zone corridor that was thoughtfully and correctly designated to be protected from such developments. Some of you recall that it took many years and hundreds of hours of meetings and discussions to develop our zoning. Things have not radically changed in our county, and this carefully reasoned zoning should not be overturned in just a couple of weeks. People make important life decisions based on the assumption that our zoning has meaning. Rezoning may help one developer while hurting several of his neighbors and others in the community. A second concern I have, which has been touched on, is that if the project does not prosper and ultimately fails, and this is a concern especially because of the proposed bypass that would divert a great deal of traffic off this section of 78, could spell doom for the project. Mr. Doster has told us that he has not yet conducted formal market research, so we don't know what is likely to happen. I'm afraid that despite his hard work and best efforts, we may be left with a permanent modern intrusion into our uniquely historic and scenic entranceway corridor. And I'll stop there. Thank you very much. I'm opposed to the rezoning and request that if you're not ready to make a decision, please defer. Can I do handouts if you want to? And I have listed the resources that Jim Hawkins was talking about there.
Next person I have is Charles Doster, but as the applicant, Charles, I'm going to let you speak last, if that's okay?
Sure.
And the honor, Charles, is Janet Hill.
Good evening. I'm Janet Hill. I live at 500 Wolfskin Road in Arnoldtsville. I'm probably maybe three miles from this location, and I have some of the same concerns that's already been expressed here today. And I did go to the meeting with Mr. Doster last week, where he did explain a lot. I do have a question. Scott said that they were going to move the driveway, and I'm not sure what direction that's going to be, but since I found out about this project, I've driven that section both ways, and I just don't see how that's going to be a very safe area for people to be turning from either direction. We all know how many wrecks are at Cherokee Corner, but it's not just at Cherokee Corner, it's that big hill, so I have concerns about the traffic that's going to be existing on there now. And I know at the time of the presentation, Mr. Doster talked about the driveway was going to be about 1,000 feet from the AME Church, so it wouldn't be close to the church. So I don't know if the driveway would get closer or farther away. However, if you look at the plans, the building, they're going to have the events, it's only about 200 feet from that church. So even though the driveway is pretty far away, it looks to me like that the event space, I think that's what it's called, designated on there, is going to be very close to that church, which is a historic church. And everybody here has spoken better about the historic significance than I can probably do. I do have also concerns that even though you can say you're going to have good tenants, I don't really know how you do that. I mean, if people are willing to pay the rent, whatever rent you charge, I'm not sure how much you can say, what you're selling, is it good enough for us? That that seems to be, I don't really know how you enforce that. I also have a big concern that it's not consistent with the comprehensive plan, and as people have pointed out, this plan had just been approved several months ago. And so us to start this brand-new 20-year plan with rezoning something inconsistent with what has been designated as a plan really doesn't make any sense to me, and it just means, it seems to me to set the precedent that every time somebody comes before the board to rezon, you're going to be in the position of having to explain, well, why did you rezone? One person inconsistent with the plan, and you're not going to rezon for me. And so that's another reason that I also oppose this rezoning. And the last thing I'd also like to, to raise, and it's been raised by several people to me, is that we outsource our planning to private contractor Williamson. If our planner were an employee, that planner could not appear on behalf of any private persons other than himself before a public party. Because we outsource it to Williamson Associates, as our code of ethics is currently written, there's no reason, which is now Mr. Williams and Company is both advising county on planning and representing private people in advocating to the board to make changes in our zoning. That bothers me. I think, looking at the code of ethics, which is section 3-102, it's not, it doesn't address contractors. So they're not violating our current code of ethics, but I think that it certainly gives the appearance of a conflict, and I don't think that that is what we should have in the community. There should be transparency and clarity, and maybe this is not something you can do anything about tonight, but I do think as we outsource things, we need to have our code of ethics reflect that not only can public officials and employees not have these conflicts of interest, but also these third parties that we outsource our governmental, our governmental responsibilities to cannot have that same conflict of interest. And so that's the last reason I wanted to articulate why I oppose this, and I hope that the board will not approve this rezoning and let this area remain as the way it currently is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Patty Carroll.
Hi, I'm Patty Carroll, 82 Quell Lane, Crawford, Georgia. And I have a whole lot to say whilst hearing that. I'm just going to ask you to just, you know, do your job and protect the county members and let them regain trust in you and show them that you do stand for us and for the zoning rules that have been made and all the accommodations and all the meetings and all the people that trusted you to protect us. I'm just asking you to protect everybody. Thank you.
Next, the last person I have to sign up to speak, other than the applicant, Charles Doster.
I'm sorry, you said, you said, had someone else?
No, you would, you would be the last person.
I am the last person.
I am the last person. I was stuck here, but I do have some notes. Thank you. My address is in Jackson County, forty-sixth and North Road, Charles Doster. I appreciate your time this evening, and also appreciate the time the folks that I've already met with. Real nice people. I was a little hesitant to go into town meeting, hope they may lynch me, but.